Thank you very much and welcome to the June 15th Mesa City Council meeting. I can see by the screen in front of me that all of our council is present and our city staff is present in the city manager's conference room. We appreciate the public participating via telephone and internet. We're taking public comments and this is a public meeting, but it's of course a little technologically facilitated due to our trying to avoid spreading the coronavirus as we have for the last few months. I would remind the public that if we are anxious to get your participation in the meeting, so if you'd like to speak, you should submit a blue card. We prefer that you do that an hour before the meeting and you can find that information on the first page of the agenda at mesaz.gov/bluecard. We will begin this meeting, as is our custom, with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is awards and recognitions and we do have a proclamation on our agenda tonight that I'm excited to talk about. I'd like to proclaim June the 19th of this year as Juneteenth Celebration Day. On June the 19th in the year 1865, Union General Gordon Granger read federal orders in Galveston, Texas that set slaves free. Texas was the most remote of the slave states and it was the last to be officially notified of the Emancipation Proclamation. The first Juneteenth celebration was held the following year. With us tonight via Zoom to accept the proclamation, and I have the proclamation right here, and to tell us more about this great tradition is Mesa's Human Relations Advisory Board Chair, Mr. Ron Williams. Welcome, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mayor Giles, I really want to thank you for your support in issuing this proclamation to proclaim June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth Celebration Day in Mesa. Just know that this proclamation does play a role in the healing of the pain in the African American community in Mesa. I want to recognize two of our dedicated Mesa community leaders who promulgated and urged me to request this proclamation. They are Judge Elasia Sears from the West Mesa Justice Court and a termed out board member from the Human Relations Advisory Board member Nadia Kaligi, who has organized multiple Zen Nights events and Juneteenth celebrations in Mesa. For some listening tonight, they may just see sharing this information is some boring history of our past that should stay in our past. And they may ask, why are we talking about the past? Because real lives were deeply affected by the past and generations today are still feeling its effects. It is the past that has brought us here today and we all know what's happening today. For those not familiar with Juneteenth and what it means, our great mayor gave a quick summary earlier and I will add, here's a quick short summary from my perspective. President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, as the nation approached its third year in the Civil War. It declared that all persons held as slaves within the rebellious states are henceforward shall be free. The Emancipation Proclamation led the way to a total abolition of slavery in the United States. And although the Emancipation Proclamation declared slaves to be free, slavery had remained unchanged and unaffected in Texas because some slave owners withheld the information until after harvest season. U.S. General Gordon Granger stood on Texas soil and read General Orders Number Three. The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. So on June 19th, 1865, two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation, some 1,800 federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas to take control of the state and ensure that all enslaved people were finally freed, finally. As word spread about Granger's announcement, celebrations broke out across the state and Juneteenth, short for June 19th commemorates this day, which marked the effective end of slavery in the United States. Again, Mayor, thank you for this proclamation in Mesa and thank you to Judge Sears and Nadia Kaligi for your leadership.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you for, I'll make sure that I find you and I hand this to you. It was an honor to issue that proclamation and thank you for your great work chairing our Human Relations Advisory Board. We appreciate your dedication and your service to our city.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all.
You bet. The next item on our agenda is to take action on the consent agenda. Mr. Kevin Christopher will read the consent agenda for the council.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item two, approval of minutes of previous meetings is written. Item 3A, Act on Liquor License Application for Mesa Quick and Easy, 6806 East Brown Road. Item 4A, Act on Three-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Janitorial and Sanitation Supplies for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for City Departments. Item 4B, Act on Contract to Purchase Seating Upholstery for the Mesa Arts Center as requested by the Arts and Culture Department. This purchase is funded by the Mesa Arts Center Restoration Fund. Item 4C, Act on Three-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Heavy Duty Automotive Body Repair Services for the Fleet Services Department. Item 4D, Act on Contract to Purchase Network Hardware for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Items 4E, 4F, 4G, and 4H have been removed from the consent agenda. Item 4I, Act on Contract for Service and Parts for Turf Maintenance Equipment for the Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. Item 4GA, Act on Dollar Limit Increase to the Term Contract for Fire Protection Equipment Maintenance and Repair Services for the Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. Item 4K, Act on Three-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Water, Wastewater Treatment and Pool Chemicals for the Water Resources Department, Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department, and the Materials and Supply Warehouse. Item 5A, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Maricopa County Department of Transportation and the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community for Design and Construction of the Gilbert Road Bridge. Item 5B, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Grant Agreement with the City of Tucson to Accept Grant Funds Under the East Valley Drug Enforcement Task Force Program to Be Used for Overtime and Services by the Police Department's Organized Crime Section. Item 5C, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Grant Agreement with the City of Tucson to Accept Grant Funds Under the Arizona Warrant Apprehension Network Targeted Enforcement Detail to Be Used for Overtime for the Police Department's Violent Offender Unit. Item 5D has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 5E, Act on Resolution Calling a Special Bond Election to Submit to the Qualified Electors of the City of Mesa in conjunction with the General Election to be held on November 3rd, 2020, the question of authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of the city to the purposes of transportation improvements and designating the manner in which the election is conducted, the translation of election materials, voter registration deadlines, and early voting dates. Item 6A, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ZON 19-00805 pertaining to land generally located south of Williamsfield Road on the east and west sides of Signal Butte Road. Rezone, Council Use Permit and Modification of the Destination and Gateway Planned Area Development to Allow Mixed-Use Development. Item 6B, Introduction of a Resolution Adopting a Notice of Intent to Enter Into a Retail Development Tax Incentive Agreement pursuant to State Law related to the development of improvements for the project known as a Destination at Gateway, generally located at the corner of Signal Butte and Williamsfield Roads. Item 7A, Act on Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Title 1, Chapter 7 of the Mesa City Code pertaining to City Magistrates to Formalize the Term of Office for the Presiding City Magistrate and Clarify the Term of Office for City Magistrates and Amending Title 2, Chapter 3 of the Mesa City Code pertaining to Judicial Advisory Board to Formalize the Appointment and Reappointment Process for the Presiding City Magistrate and Clarify the Presiding City Magistrate's Authority to Appoint Magistrates Pro Town. Item 8A, Act on Subdivision Plant, Fiesta Village, located on the northwest corner of Thomas School Road and Southern Avenue. And Item 8B, Act on Subdivision Plant, a Re-Plant of Desert Jet Center, Leash Hold Condominiums, located at the east of Greenfield Road on the north side of McKellup's Road. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, this is Jim. Before you vote on the consent agenda, just for clarification on the consent agenda as it was read, 6A is the zoning ordinance. It's for introduction. 6B, the resolution, that is for adoption for that resolution that gives just the 14-day notice, just for clarification.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Mickelson, have there been any requests to speak on any items on the consent agenda?
No requests, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Council, is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Okay, we'll go with a motion by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Freeman. We will do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker.
Actually, Jim's clarification that he just made, I have a question. I thought we were getting a presentation on this on 6B. Are you saying now that we are entering into a tax incentive agreement, we will not be getting any type of presentation on that 6B?
Mayor and council, no, that's not what I'm saying. The 6B is literally just a notice. It's a legal notice saying in 14 days after this date, council may consider development agreement. So you're not entering into the development agreement. It's just a notice requirement. I think it's similar to the annexation cases where you have a hearing sometimes just to release petitions. You're not even annexing. You don't take any action that day. So the only action you're doing is saying, we're giving a notice that in the future we're going to consider a development agreement.
I got you. Okay, I vote aye, John. Sorry for the.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Heredia.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you. And I vote aye as well, so that motion passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda are items 4E, 4F, 4G, and 4H that have been taken off of the consent agenda. We will handle these items, however, together. Item 4E is the renewal of a contract for trauma kits for the police department. The trauma kits are issued to Mesa officers to enhance the survivability rate of victims involved in tragic events. Item 4F is a contract for drug screening and testing supplies for the police department's Forensic Services Division. These supplies are for Randolph Evidence Investigator Biochip Analyzer. Item 4G is a contract for DNA crime lab supplies for the police department's Forensic Services Division. And item 4H is a contract for DNA instrument supplies for the police department's Forensic Service Division. Ms. Mickelson, I believe we do have a blue card and a request to speak. Could you introduce, is that, do we have one blue card or is there more than one?
Mayor, we have a blue card for item 4E and then we have another additional blue card that covers 4E through 4H.
Okay.
The standalone blue card for 4E, they have comments they've submitted, they request to have those read into the record, and then the second request, that gentleman should be on the line.
Okay.
Do you want me to have him, do you have preference in the order?
I don't. Why don't you, why don't we just go ahead and hear the card from 4E and then we'll, from that speaker, and then we'll listen to the speaker on the telephone for the other items.
Okay. The 4E, they oppose this item. The name of the speaker is Dorian Lenz, and they state, "I support police officers having trauma kits. However, you have four agenda items totaling over $450,000. Imagine what good social services could be done with that kind of money. It is no longer surprising to me why most of the Mesa Cares Act money went to the police department. We do not need community police that look like they belong in a war zone. It is time for the city of Mesa to look deep into itself and determine better ways to spend taxpayer money. We are every day asking armed police officers to handle situations which they are neither trained nor have any business handling. Instead, we have thrown money to the police department to solve it, and they are solving these community issues with a hammer. And when the only tool you have is a hammer, then every problem becomes a nail. It is time to reallocate funds away from the police department and towards social services, Black Lives Matter." The item, the speaker card for items 4E through 4H, the comment card was submitted by Joel Sains, and he should be on the line to make his comments.
Thank you. Mr. Spain, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Giles, Vice Mayor Freeman, and members of the city council. Joel Sains, my address is.
Joel, I'm sorry, I'll just stop you for one moment just to clarify that you have five minutes to make your comments, and I'll let you know when those five minutes are up.
Sure. I don't think it'll take five minutes. Again, it's Joel Sains. I'm a resident at 1017 North April in Mesa, and I am asking the city council to table consideration of agenda items 4E through 4H until the city council commits to a fundamental review of the future of the Mesa Police Department. The word that we're hearing recently is to defund the police department, and I prefer to say that it is to defund, reimagine, and refund the police department. The movement is occurring throughout the country and it should also include Mesa. I want to make a point that defunding is not a radical idea. Maintaining what we have now is what is radical. First, what is radical is accepting that the department as it exists today is not representative of its community. Mesa's population of color is 36.1%. Only 20% of full-time officers are people of color. 87.9% of Mesa police are male. Only 12.3% of sworn officers are women. In what other area would we accept that only 12% people in city employment are women? Ask yourself why that is acceptable. Reimagine a police department whose functions make it possible for women to make up half of the sworn force. Because when you answer the question now, your answer will be that that is the way that we think of policing in Mesa now. It is easy to accept that 88% of the force are men when the police department and the police force is organized so that that sector of our population are more qualified to do the work that police do than others. What we are accepting now is radical. Also, accepting incremental change over decades, decades that the Mesa Police Department has been trying to diversify its force. And we're only at a point where we have a 16% differential between the population in Mesa and the police force. Accepting those differentials between our population of people of color and women in the police force is what is radical. Also, what is radical is our current system that puts all the costs of police mistakes on the people who are harmed by those mistakes. The city council is probably aware of the fact that the defense of qualified immunity is a defense that can be waived. The city can simply agree that it will no longer allow its attorneys to assert the defense of qualified immunity, and it can require its officers to waive the defense as a condition of defending and indemnifying officers. What qualified immunity does is, it is a way to shield the city and all of its residents from the costs of police negligence. When the city prevails in a qualified immunity defense, it does not mean that the actions of the police were reasonable. I'm quoting from a case called Malley versus Briggs, 1986, from the United States Supreme Court, where the court said, "The qualified immunity defense provides ample protection to all but the plainly incompetent and those who knowingly violate the law." So an officer could have made a horrible decision, causing death or serious injury, and the people who pay for those mistakes are not the taxpayers who are served by the police, but the single person who is injured or their family. It is not radical, it is not radical, to say that the people who benefit from policing should pay the cost of police mistakes. What is radical, what we have now, that people are hurt when police make mistakes, pay the price all by themselves because of the defense of qualified immunity. So the second step of a defunding process, which is re-imagination, should also include the city considering telling its attorneys, representing the city in civil rights cases, not to raise the defense of qualified immunity. The re-imagining process should look at every item in the police budget critically to ask how any individual budget item, including the items on the agenda today, affect the community and also how it can adversely affect people of color living in Mesa. Another idea that is radical is that the police department, the department has placed on its website a response to the Eight Can't Wait Social Media Campaign. One of the questions on the Eight Can't Wait Social Media Campaign is whether the police officers of the Mesa Department are forbidden from using the kerated artery restraint. On the police department's website, the answer to that question was that the use of the kerated control technique is in our use of force policy and only available in situations where deadly force is authorized. In other words, the city of Mesa allows you to kerate.
I wanted to let you know that the five minutes is up if you want to wrap it up.
That's fine. Thank you.
Sure.
I asked the city council to table agenda items 4E through 4H and to schedule hearings to begin re-imagining what the police department is like, taking the first step of imagining what the police department looks like when it is defunded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Thank you for participating electronically. We appreciate the thoughtful and well-prepared remarks. Council, any discussion on this item or is there a motion to approve items 4E through 4H?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve items 4E through 4H.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I'm going to support this motion. I understand Mr. Spain's request, but I just remind everyone that what we're talking about here is trauma kits and forensic services, which I think are essential services that really we can't afford to table when it comes to our police work and could have a very detrimental impact on our community if we delayed the funding of these essential services. So I will be voting yes on this motion. We will do this as a roll call vote. We'll begin, Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is item 5D, I believe. Just to remind everyone what that is, this is adopting a pension funding policy and accepting the employer's share of assets and liabilities under the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System as required by a state statute. Mr. Whitaker, I know you asked to have this item removed from the agenda. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, the only thing I want to say in regards to this is that I, you know, from the beginning, since we changed it from a 20-year amortization period to a 25, I haven't supported it. I don't believe we should be spending the extra millions of dollars in cost to defer paying down our pension liability, so I'll be voting against this tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any other comments? Is there a motion for approval? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Again, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Whitaker, how do you vote? I'm sorry, I apologize. Let's start with District One. Vice Mayor, how do you vote? Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker.
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so the motion passes six ayes and one nay with Councilmember Whitaker voting nay. The next items on our agenda are items 9A, 9B, 9C, and 9D. They're all related to the same zoning case located at the northwest corner of Thomas and Wrecker. These requests are to allow for the development of a single resident subdivision and involve a minor general plan amendment, a rezoning, and a development agreement. We will handle all of these items together. So we will have a public hearing for the minor general plan amendment, the rezoning, and the development agreement, and I declare that public hearing open. I know we do have a few requests to speak. Ms. Mickelson, could you please introduce the speakers and we're going to give each of them five minutes.
Mayor, the first speaker is Earl Farnsworth, and you should be on the phone to comment.
Thank you. Mr. Farnsworth.
Thank you, Mayor and council. One thing that I have learned in life is that when things don't start right, we seldom end up right. What I'm talking about is censure decision to steal this parkland from the citizens of Mesa first by trying to trade it to a developer, the land that he owns, because you were, and may still be determined, that this land will become commercial, even though it is currently zoned residential. Your heavy-handed power-grabbing disposition moved you to offer up our parkland in exchange. That conversation soon spread like bees to nectar, and other developers became interested in the property, and I can't blame them. So a plan to auction the property was hatched. First, there had to be some propaganda spread so that your actions would seem sincere and thoughtful as elected and hired personnel. After all, the citizens of Mesa had failed to pass two bond issues that would have provided the money to develop the property. You are correct, but the most important fact related to this property was those bond issues were in the year 2020 years ago. And just maybe the citizens of Mesa were the wiser party as the year 2000 was a recession year. The other act that had to be done from the back room was just spring this on the citizens and never tell them what was happening until it was too late. So that is what you've done without any legitimate input from the citizens of Mesa. You're now at the point of losing our neighborhood district park. Now let me get to the meat. In the advertised auction invitation, it reads that the auction will be for three parcels totaling 132 acres as is, not 115 acres as outlined in the development agreement. Everyone has known from the inception of this plan to auction the property that there would be a buffer zone approximately 600 feet from the enamel tally property line south to the building line, that the successful developer in the bidding process would be developing that area into a park area of trails for walking and biking, of which the public would have access to. When I met with Sean Lake of Lake and Pugh, I asked Sean if Mesa was contributing any money to the development of the park area. His response was none. The following quotes are taken from the East Valley Tribune and reporter Jim Walsh. John Giles said at the time that he envisioned a win-win scenario where the city was able to auction off the land at a profit and still develop some hiking trails and other low-key recreation facilities. Sean Lake said, "Blandford is working to accommodate a balance between private and public uses." He said, "The large buffer zone includes more than 27 acres." He said, "The buffer zone is anticipated to include a system of trails open for public use. We will try to preserve a big chunk of that land for public use," Lake said. The plan somewhat fits Mayor Giles' vision when the city auctioned the land, a La Cindice-esque community with public access. Christine Zalanka, Mesa Development Services Manager, noted that the city council was adamant that there would be public recreational opportunities such as hiking and biking trails when it voted to accept Blandford's bid of 21.1 million. City manager Chris Brandy also pledged, use 4 million from the land sale, the price the city paid for the property in 1998, to build additional. city paid for the property in 1998, to build additional recreational facilities at other locations in northeast Mesa. Mesa never intended to contribute to the park development. The agreement is now written, is way outside the lines of the original proposal. Let me break it into two camps. The original agreement, the city would get 21.1 million dollars, developed park with walking trails and et cetera, which the citizens would have access to. The developer would be responsible for the building, maintenance, and liability of this area, seismic instruments, and the buffer zone and a sound wall between the buffer zone and NAMO-Tally.
Mr. Farnsworth, I just want to let you know your five minutes are up if you want to wrap it up.
Okay, I'll finish here in one second. Thank you. The net would have been 21.1 million to the city, but as proposed today, the city would get 21.1 million, yet to keep 17 acres, of which then the park may be built according to your agreement with city funds, and it would be maintained with city funds, and the liability coverage would be with city funds. This agreement is now completely outside the original. If you pass this development agreement tonight, I'm going to ask the Attorney General to look at this situation because I think it's a violation of the agreement that has been in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Why don't, we'll go ahead and listen to all of the speakers and then we'll have staff and the applicant to respond to some of these issues. Ms. Mickelson, who's the next speaker?
Sorry about that. David Bender is the next speaker, and he should be on the line.
Thank you. Mr. Bender.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I live at 7755 East Sugarloaf Circle in Mesa. I am speaking on behalf of the Red Mountain Ranch Social Club. Our first comment concerns the city's public involvement process for this major action. Public involvement should have begun more than a year ago before the bidding process for the park land was initiated by the city. Community input on Blandford's plan is an after-the-fact process to dot the i's and cross the t's. The real decision to convert the park land to residential was already made a year ago without public input. The do-nothing and other alternatives should have been presented at that time for community input. We have no detailed comments on the Blandford conceptual plan. However, we do recommend that Blandford be required to landscape the median on East Thomas Road in the area adjacent to their proposed development. This would tie into our second comment and recommendation, to have a city project which would landscape the median on the one-mile section of Thomas Road from Power Road West to Recker Road, similar to the existing medians in the area. We realize this recommendation is not part of the rezoning case, but it is one way for the city to help compensate the surrounding neighborhoods for the loss of the proposed park land as a result of this rezoning. A landscaped median on this wide Thomas Road section should have been done when Red Mountain Ranch was built back in the 80s, since the road divides the community. The city was also considering this improvement as a traffic calming project when Recker Road interchange was constructed on the Route 202 freeway, but there was no funding available for this work at that time. The Social Club proposes that some of the funds from sale of this park land should be utilized to fund the landscaping project on Thomas Road. We sent the mayor by letter of March 30th a signed petition with more than 200 names to be included into the public record. The petition reads, quote, "We, the undersigned, petition the city of Mesa to use a portion of the funds from the sale of park land at the northwest corner of East Thomas and North Recker Roads to landscape the median on East Thomas Road from North Power Road to North Recker Road. This is considered a safety and environmental improvement for the residents of Red Mountain Ranch and adjacent neighborhoods," end quote. We hope the city council will seriously consider this landscape recommendation and give something back which would improve Red Mountain Ranch and the surrounding area. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Ms. Mickelson, who's the next speaker?
The next speaker is Charles Hughes. I believe he's on the line, but I'm not sure.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Are you there?
I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed. You have five minutes.
Thank you. This is Charles Hughes, 4055 North Recker Road. I worked, I've worked as an engineer, manager, and executive for over 45 years for Bell Helicopter, Hughes Helicopters, McDonnell Douglas Helicopters, and Boeing Rudder Craft. I wish I could present in person, but I thank you for your hard work in these difficult times and a process that keeps us safe, but is difficult for all of us. I, I think you've heard some previous comments about the process. I think some people have felt this was a done deal. I am asking, please look at this zoning with fresh eyes. Check all the baggage at the door, and please give me some, please give this consideration because I believe I'm going to touch on a few facts you've heard before but not in a public hearing. If this was the start of the process and in different times, I think there would be many people in the room against this change. I will trust the facts to carry the day against allowing 300 homes in this area. I'm not representing any company, but trust I am speaking for the Falcon District. I was made aware of this change by a friend of mine, Raj Carlin, who has written, I think, to every council member, maybe even talked to you, but he can't make it today, but he brought it to my attention as a coworker and a friend, and he reminded, that reminded me of the many small airports I have seen lose much of their economic utility due to housing encroachment. So I'm going to take this from a different approach. I presented several months ago the financials from our approved Falcon Field Master Plan, Appendix D, the economic analysis. In your package, there's three sheets that I prepared that I enclosed with my comment card. I'm not going to ask you to change, switch back and forth between them, but as you discuss this, they should be in front of you. Several months ago, I pointed out the, our own plan, our own approval says that this Falcon District brings in $136 billion over 20 years. What I didn't mention is I don't believe there's any growth planned, but I believe everyone is working hard to grow the Falcon District, and I think Boeing has even looked at some plans to expand their work there at the plant here in Mesa. So I would like to point out that if you only assume a 1% loss in utility, which I think is low, that's a 1.36 billion dollar hit versus a one-time gain of 20 million dollars. And I personally saw Bell Helicopter lose the ability to conduct flight test operations at two small airports. This was not just a 1% loss, it was 100% loss to the airport from Bell Helicopter. Finally, all these homes are in what is called an experienced overflight zone. I've enclosed that in my materials. In that, the state requires that all these homes will have to have navigation easement in their titles. Now, since I submitted that, I've also been informed or made aware that the city, Boeing, and Blandford are working and have worked out a stronger easement agreement which will be in place, but I do not think you could trust that to mitigate the economic impact. So the questions would be, first of all, does those agreements protect all the businesses in the Falcon District, any future businesses? What kind of business might be there in 10 years? And what about NAMO-Tally? I live three-quarters miles away from their test areas, and at times their explosions sound like it is just down the block. I was at a meeting last year with other citizens and officials from NAMO-Tally. They're trying to be good neighbors, and as a foreign firm, they appeared not to want to protest the homes to United States City. There is a 600 buffer approved, but if I can hear the explosions and you're putting 300 homes closer to those explosions, it will not bode well for NAMO-Tally. What I'd like to point out as a second argument is the fact that we are having to grant, they're going to have to have navigation easements in their title, we're trying to make it stronger. That is a tacit recognition that those homes are a problem. We wouldn't have this with a regular housing development, but we have to have it, which I don't think guarantees economic utility gain. It could still happen. So we have this easement, it's a recognition that it's a problem.
Mr. Hughes, your five minutes are up if you want to wrap up your comments.
I will, and as I was about to say, in conclusion, I really think the 1% impact could be low. The 20 million against 1.36 billion is not, is not worth it. Please, please, you've worked very hard to establish the Falcon District. I was really not aware of how much until the economic report came out. You've done a great job. You've made a great commitment. Commitments made, commitments keep. Please vote no or at least study this further, as those homes could be with us till 3023 as per the study session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Ms. Mickelson, do we have any other requests to speak?
No additional requests on this item, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm now going to, Council, before maybe we go to discussion, I'm going to ask staff and maybe the applicant to redress some of the questions that were raised by these gentlemen. Why don't we start with Mr. Farnsworth? Mr. Brady, I think, as I understand Mr. Farnsworth's questions, they revolve around the city's using the funds that are generated by the sale of this property to pay for park improvements. Can you talk, or someone on your staff, talk a little bit about what commitment the city's, how those funds are being used to honor the commitment that was made to the voters many years ago to use this for park?
So, thank you, Mayor and Council. So I think we spoke about this in the very beginning, about taking the, and it's important to understand, we've done this before, where we've actually taken park land, it was a purchase with either grants or with city bonds, and then we've had to reallocate it either by additional parks somewhere else or to do park improvements. So that's what we're proposing to do. We spent just under $4 million for the acquisition of this property, and what we're proposing is a budget of about $5 million for what we call a distributed park plan. The nature trail that's located on this site that's between NAMO-Tally and the homes will be about a million, how much, Mark?
Estimated right now at 1.2 million.
1.2 million for that park, and then we've made a commitment to the community to build out pickleball courts at Ginatri, and then the balance of the funds that are available would go to a project that was voted on and approved by the community for the soccer fields at Red Mountain. We contribute the balance to it. So for a total of $5 million. So we've added to the 4 million that was originally for the purchase of the property, and we're committing the 5 million. I know the developer is also having significant conversations with the homeowners association at Red Mountain about other amenities there, but I can't speak to those specifics.
Okay, so just so we're clear, in addition to the money the city is spending at that site and in the broader region, there's also negotiations between the developer and the HOA for the existing HOA park. Is that our understanding?
That is correct. That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind, I'll just keep moving through this. Mr. Bender asked a few questions as well. I think his revolved around what was our public involvement process through this, and I wonder if Veronica or someone is there to talk about how we engaged with the community, maybe with the HOA or the other stakeholders to make sure that we were getting, that their voices were heard in this process?
Sure, and I think Veronica can speak to that, but I think Councilman Luna was involved in all those conversations too, so.
Yes, I know that's the case. Why don't we start with Veronica and then have Mr. Luna address that as well?
Mayor, council members, yes, the developer did do quite an extensive neighborhood participation outreach. They held two neighborhood meetings, and I attended both, and they were both very well-attended where they presented the proposed development and solicited feedback from those in attendance. In addition to that, there were legal notifications that were sent to all property owners within the statutory required distance from the property.
I did watch the planning and zoning hearing on this item too, and I know there was a very lengthy hearing. There was a lot of public speaking, a lot of folks showed up and shared their thoughts on it. Mr. Luna, do you, I know that you've, this has been, consumed a lot of your time and energy. Do you want to kind of describe how you've worked with the HOA and the neighbors on this project?
Yes, I had an opportunity to work with the Red Mountain HOA and to describe the project to them, and they are working in collaboration with Mr. Blandford and his developer, mainly to look at the whole area, but also to look at the Red Mountain, they have a small pocket park, well, it's actually larger than a pocket park, that Mr. Blandford is going to provide additional amenities to the Red Mountain HOA. So there has been collaboration. I have spoken with members of the HOA board relative to that, so there has been some positive things happening relative to that. And I'd like to also talk, maybe Mr. Lake is available, he can speak to the concerns relative to public comments and public meetings. I know that he's held public meetings, and I wonder if he's present that he can address that question.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Lake, the attorney for the developer, is on the line. Mr. Lake, can you share with us what some of your public outreach and community engagement was on this zoning case?
Absolutely, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, outstanding. Well, my name is Sean Lake. I'm here on behalf of Blandford Homes. We really appreciate the opportunity to be before the council here on this great project that we're really looking forward to. As staff has pointed out, we have done a substantial amount of outreach with the community, and this started back on October 1st, roughly nine months ago. So we've been working with the neighbors for quite some time. We've also consistently been working with the Red Mountain Ranch HOA Board in presenting and working with them, and we really appreciate all the effort that that board and the community has done. But as Veronica pointed out, we held a neighborhood meeting, and it was very well-attended, and we provided the, not only the state-required notification, but also the city's required notification, and we were told, hey, you really should invite everybody. So then we held another neighborhood meeting where we invited everybody within a mile radius of the site. This is, this was a 1,500-person mailer, and 125 people attended this neighborhood meeting, and we presented the project, and this was back end of last year. So we've been working with the community and continue to work with the community on our outreach on this plan, and I think it's been received very well by the community. We continue to work with the Red Mountain Ranch HOA Board. As we know, the Red Rock Park, which is kind of the notch out of the center of this property, is an existing Red Mountain Ranch park. That's not a public park, it's not the City of Mesa Park, it is a Red Mountain Ranch park, and we have worked with the HOA, and really the ball's in their court, where we are willing to make a substantial capital contribution to make improvements to that park and be part of that park, as well as making ongoing HOA due payments to the HOA for that park going forward. That's in addition to the substantial amount of open space and amenities that we're going to have within our project. I think it is very safe to say our open space and amenities, not including the Red Rock Park, just our project alone, if you've looked, I'm sure you watched the P&amp;Z presentation and our zoning application, well exceeds all of the requirements for open space amenities on our own property, that the people who live here will be able to recreate and enjoy with multiple different park locations spread throughout the 90-acre development. We think it's a good project and one that would merit your support. Let me touch base on some of the other issues that were brought up. We also reached out to NAMO-Tally, and we worked with them. We did a noise study with NAMO-Tally where they were on the site. We did a noise study with NAMO Tally where they were on the site and did various different explosions and noise generating activity. Well, we had a noise expert onsite with equipment measuring the impact, none of which had any cause of concern with Mr. Blanford, who was physically on the site when they were occurring, as well as the findings of the study found that were well into conformance with residential standards. We've also been working on the navigation easement with the City of Mesa. As you, we all know from the Falcon Field environmental study that was the City of Mesa prepared a few years ago, this site is outside of the 55 noise decibel level. So typically, according to state law, you can't have residential within a 65 noise contour. We try to keep it out of the 60 noise contour, but we're well outside of the 55 noise contour. And so we think this is outside of that area and won't have impact. We believe that all the properties in Northeast Mesa that develop, including the one where I live in Northeast Mesa, they're going to be subject to overflight. That's just a part of living in Northeast Mesa. And so the developments that I've known or at least been involved in the last 10 to 15 years, every development in this area in Northeast Mesa signs an navigation easement with the City of Mesa to protect those very people that Mr. Hughes was bringing up in his conversation, that any noise, dust, vibration, those type of things would be protected for those businesses. So the city does have an navigation easement that addresses those issues. I can go on and on and on, Mayor, but I think I touched on a couple of those issues that were raised.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Mr. Luna, what else?
Mayor, I was wondering if we can invite Corinne Nystrom. I think, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Chuck Hughes and David Bender. I've met with them a few times relative to the development, but Mr. Hughes cited the notion of a negative economic impact. And so I wanted to have Corinne speak to that notion of a negative economic impact as we move forward in the city. I know that the Falcon Field Airport conducted a study, an extensive study. And so if she's available, I'd like to go ahead, like her to go ahead and speak relative to the concerns that Mr. Hughes has expressed.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, thank you very much. As you were referring to, the city recently conducted an economic benefit analysis of the airport as part of its master plan update that was just recently completed. And within all of that, we have indications of the forecasted growth for the airport. And our opinion as the city is that this development will not necessarily have a negative economic impact on the airport because we don't have any real numbers to tie that back to at this point. There are no historic numbers in place that would, that we could be able to refer back to to say that every time a residential subdivision has been approved within the general area of the airport, that the economic benefit or impact of the airport and the Boeing facility have been reduced. So we have no historic information that would indicate whatsoever that there is going to be a negative impact. As a matter of fact, every indicator is, and this is through, and one reason why we do the master plan update is that the airport is going to continue to grow.
If that's okay, Chris. Corinne, Red Mountain Ranch has been there probably over 30 years. The Boeing Company has been there for more than 30 years. And we know that Falcon Field Airport has been there since 1941. And so based on what you know now, you've been at the airport, I think, over 10 years, have you had any issues related to any companies citing issues with the airport, Boeing, any noise that was detrimental to their operations?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, we have not had any businesses relocate from Falcon Field Airport specifically because of the concerns expressed by members of the community about the noise. As a matter of fact, any of the businesses that have perhaps been part of the noise discussions have been extremely amenable and open and continue to be open to discussing any issues and concerns that either members in the Red Mountain community, Red Mountain Ranch, or any other part of the Falcon Field area, very open to discussing what those issues are and trying to work with them to address those concerns. And so, no, we have not seen any businesses leave the airport as a result of the noise issues.
Chris, you have a comment?
Oh, I was, Councilmember Luna, I was just going to point out, we have a graphic to show also where the helicopter flight paths are in and out of this area to show that that's probably the part that we really want to protect.
Right.
Those are those pathways because that is where, according to the tower at Falcon Field, 95% of helicopter flights, that's the path they follow. And one of the items that we hope to bring to council in the near future is a resolution supporting protecting those corridors because that is where the helicopters fly. It's designated as Pigley and Greenfield. You can see that on the map. And that's our way of making sure that future developments, that's where we need to concentrate. You see the separation between this location and where the actual helicopter activity is. You can tell there's quite a bit of separation there, but that flight path right there is really important in order to maintain, I guess, if you want to say, the value and the long-term viability of the airport for this purpose. And so we're working on that to bring to council a resolution committing to protecting that area in the future.
Excellent, thank you. I appreciate that, Chris. I know that I have met with many businesses, many companies, I've met with NAMO Tally. And I was concerned about that development as well, but I wanted to ensure the protection of the Falcon District and that area around that. One of my other majors concerned was Boeing. Boeing has been in Mesa for many, many years. I wanted to make sure that they were protected, that their operations were protected as they begin to move forward. And so I appreciate that Boeing working closely with the developer as well as the City of Mesa to achieve this first-party agreement on the navigation easement. I think that was an important step as we move forward in this property. And so I'm very appreciative that the city, especially Boeing and the developer, were closely to achieve this. I don't know if this is a first of its kind. Maybe Jim could speak on that, but it's certainly an achievement that we try to work towards. Jim, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. Mayor and council, and let me just give that context for the navigation easement. We do navigation easements around Falcon Field and around Gateway. They're very common. A couple of years ago, we updated the navigation easement that is used around Gateway. And so this is really sort of the first time we've updated the navigation easement that's used around Falcon Field. And so we really took the time with Boeing and this developer to do a detailed review of the navigation easement and to update it and to come to consensus with all the parties involved. I'll also point out, there was a question by one of the citizens. It does benefit all the traffic that flies out of Falcon Field and will, future flights out of Falcon Field. So it benefits all the users of Falcon Field.
Thank you for that clarification. I know I spoke with Mr. Hughes and he asked me about that. How does it protect the Falcon Field District as well as the airport? And so thank you for clarifying that. Can you just, I know, can you, at the basic level, what does that mean, the first-party navigation easement? For those that may not understand that, Jim, if you could go ahead and explain what that means.
Yeah, and the concept of the navigation easement, let me first just say what it isn't, because sometimes people think what it is, is it's controlling the flight patterns out of Falcon Field. It does not do that. The FAA Tower, Falcon Field has an FAA Tower, and the flights out of Falcon Field are governed by the Tower and FAA regulations. So this doesn't alter any of the flights as far as concerns about the ability for future users of the field. What it does at a sort of core simple level, it tells the future homeowners, it gives them notice that you may be subject to overflights and that you can't sue both the city or Boeing or other users of Falcon Field for the fact that they're flying over, in conformance with FAA obviously, and the Tower for using airspace. Which is, and as we've seen, and you know, the Haas Crossing, if you remember the overflight areas and the Haas Crossing, when you sort of overlay, overflights, overflights occur throughout the valley. The fact when you add in Sky Hardwood, basically our entire valley becomes sort of a red blob of the overflights of where aircraft are flying. So it's not some sort of, the navigation easement is not uncommon. In fact, it's very common. We just took this opportunity to update it.
So Corinne, it looks like it's on AOA 3, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell us what that means for those that may not understand that?
Well, it basically has to do with the proximity to the actual airport itself. And obviously, the further out you go, the less impact you're going to have in the airport. To put it in simpler terms, at that point, the aircraft are flying at a much higher altitude. If it's a fixed-wing aircraft, they're ascending to 1,000 feet above the ground. If they're a helicopter, they fly a little bit lower so they don't mix in with the fixed-wing aircraft. And so basically with the AOA 3, you're far enough out from the airport that, yes, you will have some overflights, but the aircraft are going to be at a higher elevation and altitude so that it won't be as disruptive as if you were just right off to the end of the runway.
Great, thank you so much. Mayor, I just, just a few statements. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Hughes. He's been very passionate about how he feels about related to this development as well as David Bender and Raj Carlin. I know that they had expressed some concerns. After listening to these fine gentlemen as well as businesses in the area, Boeing, the Falcon District, Corinne Nystrom and staff, I'm going to be in support of this development. One of the things that I'm excited about, that the city retains 17 acres south of NAMO Tally, it creates that buffer. And what we're going to be doing, that's creating a nature trail where members of the city can go and walk and take advantage of that and look at Red Mountain from that trail. So, and the original contract for 21.1 million does not change. Certainly, we're going to continue to operate the sewer lift station, which is very important, but we're going to screen it and make sure it's not, that it looks good. So we're happy with that. We're going to distribute some park amenities throughout Northeast Mesa. We're going to have pickleball at Gene Autry Park and the remaining dollars will be, that was dedicated for those, will go to future athletic fields. And that's the $5 million at Red Mountain Park, so we're happy about that. I appreciate Blanford working in collaboration with the Red Mountain Ranch residents in their community on the amenities that they want at that park. Again, just a reminder, it is an AOA location in terms of airport overflight from the Falcon Field Airport. And I think one of the key sticklers for me was Boeing making sure that they were happy. And Blanford, Boeing, and the City of Mesa entered into this first-party agreement to create this navigation easement. So I appreciate the effort they did on that. So in the long and short, I'm supportive of this development. I think it'll be good for the City of Mesa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Luna. Thank you for taking the lead on this and doing such a great job and working tirelessly on this to bring all the stakeholders together and get that win-win outcome that we were hoping for. Counsel, other questions or comments on this case? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I appreciate Councilmember Luna championing this because just tonight, we approved 8B. That's the Desert Jet Center. I believe that's in the Falcon District, correct, Councilmember?
Yes, that's correct.
So I'm thinking, I heard about economic development and the Falcon District not growing when this is not the case, in my opinion. And I recently just attended a groundbreaking with you, Councilmember Luna, and the mayor about new hangar space being put in on the west side off of Greenfield and more to come. And I know that things take a little bit of time to mature, but things are happening to Falcon Field. And being a longtime resident of Mesa, this is awesome to see it. So again, I would be supporting this change in venue and support this motion. So I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Counsel, other comments on this agenda item? I got a few questions from, yes, Jeremy.
So I have some questions in regards to the citizen comments that were made. I know that NAMO Tally was brought up and I just want to confirm, NAMO Tally is in complete support of this project. I'm out and see them here tonight and I assume if they were opposed, that they would be in a council meeting. Is that the correct assumption?
I don't know anybody who can speak for NAMO. Christine, I mean, we've met with them and they're fully aware of what's happening and they haven't not brought up any other issues. So I, but I don't want to speak on their behalf, but we have had several conversations. Christine's been onsite with them. And as you heard, Blanford was out there doing the testing on the noise. So that's, I think that's all been addressed.
Okay, but I mean, they haven't explicitly came out and said anything like?
I haven't heard anything. Sean, is that Sean? I don't know if it's Sean or?
Mayor, if I could, we actually have met many times with NAMO on this site and discussed it. We actually are working with them and will be doing, there will be some improvements done around their firing facility that will help mitigate some of the noise. So yeah, NAMO's been involved all along and so we've been working with them. So I guess if they were opposed, they would be here, but we've never received any indication from them that they were opposed to this project.
Okay, yeah, I assume that's a fair assumption too, Sean. Thank you. Some of the other things that they brought up were the, Verold had mentioned something about the discrepancy between the original sale of the land being 132 acres, but this deal only accounts for 125 or something. I haven't heard anything on that. Can somebody update me in regards to why there's a discrepancy between those two numbers?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, yes, the original sale was for approximately 132 acres and this development agreement is for 115. What that is, the discrepancy between the two is the 17 acres along the north side that's going to be the north park where we're going to have the city trail that would be on approximately 17 acres. So that's the difference.
Okay, and that's, if I recall from past presentations, I was under the impression, or I didn't hear that we were spending any money on the parks at this specific location. And if I understand correctly, tonight, out of the $5 million that was originally, that we're taking out, a million is now going back. And I assume it's to build out that north buffer, that 17 acres, is that what that million dollars going back onsite will be used for?
So as part of the 5 million was to build out the nature trail for the community. So at least we had some park commitment to that area. We heard from the residents, it was important to have, still have access to the area. And so that's where we worked together with the developer to allow us to develop the trail, the nature trail. But we've always talked about this dispersed park concept with the pickleball at Red Mountain. That's, and none of that is new.
Right, I just, the onsite investment at this specific site, I don't recall.
It was just a way for us to meet the kind of concerns of some of the neighbors about having ongoing access to this part of this property. And so it seemed like it fit very well with this buffer between NAMO Tally and the neighborhood that we could fit this trail in there. Now, it's not just for the neighborhood, but it'd be for the whole community.
Yeah, okay, so that's my second part of the question is that, is it now then, is that 17 acres located on the north side considered the hiking and the biking trails? Or will there be any public amenities within the, what is that, the other 115 acres? Or will the other 150 acres just be private development only?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker?
Private development.
The 115 acres will be private development. The 17 acres along the north side will be open to the public.
Okay. Yeah, I just thought originally, when we had put the, when we had, I had thought that on that second appraisal, the reason why, or there was something about the second appraisal that we had said that it came down in a lower value because the developer would have to build some type of buffer in there. Was that not the case or was there nothing in the appraisal document that had mentioned? Or was there nothing in the appraisal document that had mentioned anything about, about having to create that?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, you are correct. In that second appraisal, the buffer area was taken into consideration to determine the, the average market value on that property.
But most of that property in the seventeen acres, let Christine speak to it, because of the topography and the wash, it's undevelopable. So it fit well to make it a nature trail.
I see. And I guess it wouldn't really matter because they sort of just forfeited that land back to us.
Right. I mean, we didn't, it didn't lower the value. It didn't lower the purchase price, but it gave us the opportunity to still have, meet some of the needs, interests of the neighborhood to still have some access in and out of this property. And so it was kind of a balance, be trying to achieve the buffer, recognize there were seventeen acres that would not be developed on, but it was an ideal place for a nature trail that would meet the interest of a lot of people go up in that area and hike around in that area. So this was not just the people that live there, but other people come into the area and do the, do it with a dedicated parking, which doesn't exist today. Today, they park on the street. So we'll have, we can, we're at six or seven, seven parking spaces to help with that.
Okay. And does the, the zoning that we're approving tonight, does that match the zoning that we, that we had put into the, the, that second appraisal document? When we got the appraisal?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, the, the zoning that would be approved would bring the property into a density that is similar to what's out Red Mountain land. My understanding of the appraisal is that it was approximately two dwelling units per acre that was considered in the appraisal.
Uh, I'm sorry, two, two what per acre?
Two dwelling units per acre. So there's two homes to the acre.
And so tonight, are, what, what are we approving per acre? How many dwelling units per acre are we approving tonight?
Two point one seven.
Mayor, Council, so the dwelling, the density we are proving tonight is two point two, which is actually less than the, the density in Red Mountain. Actually, the density there depends, some of them are two point six and some are even three point three. So you actually have moving the density. Though the appraiser and the business owners require it to be similar to the Red Mountain, this, they've actually lowered their density. So basically, you are moving a density of two point two.
Okay. So it's close to what the original expectation was in the appraisal document. If I understand correctly, that was?
It's less dense.
It's less dense.
Oh, it's less dense?
That's great.
Okay. I, my apologies. I thought we said that the appraisal was for two, two dwellings per acre, and now we're saying there's going to be two point two dwellings per acre? Is that, what am I missing there? Isn't that more dense or?
So the overall, overall density that you are proving tonight is two point two density per acre. That's what you are proving tonight, which is less dense than what had been anticipated. And also, when, when you compare that to Red Mountain, it's actually way less dense than what is in the Red Mountain.
Right. But what, what was the density that we used for the appraisal value of the property?
So it's my, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, it's my understanding that when the second appraisal was prepared, that it was prepared considering a two point zero units to the acre. It wasn't establishing what would be the density for this proposed development. It was just used as a, as a, a potential development or potential use for the, for the land.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, the overall commitment was to make it similar to Red Mountain. That's where we started from. I think that number was put in there because that was similar. And I think that's the language applying throughout. I don't think we were trying to wholesale enjoy a very specific number, but we were very intent that it had to be similar to Red Mountain. We didn't want it to get any more dense than Red Mountain. And I think we've achieved that. But I think if you include the seventeen acres, I suspect it's significantly less dense than Red Mountain.
Okay.
Mayor, this is, this is Sean Lake, if I could speak to that?
Sure, Mr. Lake.
When, when this property was bid, the representation that was given to Blanford's home was to keep a density similar to what Red Mountain Ranch, as the city manager indicated. And so going into this, Mr. Blanford planned his project so that the smallest lots were bigger than the smallest lots at Red Mountain Ranch. And, and our larger, largest lots were very similar to the size of the lots of Red Mountain Ranch. And quite frankly, we exceed the lot sizes of, of most every lot that's adjacent to this. And as Nana pointed out, our density is well below with what you see in the area. So we believe that we've met the intent when we acquired this property, which is to maintain consistency and compatibility with the Red Mountain Ranch lot size and density and have a substantial amount of open space in this project to go with it.
Thanks. Thanks, Sean. Um, so I guess I just have one other thing. Maybe my memory doesn't serve me correctly, but I was under the impression originally we started these discussions that the developer would be paying for the onsite amenities in the park. Was that, was that not discussed? Or did that change at any, at any point during the process?
They are having conversations with the HOA to put improvements in the private, or yeah, the HOA parks. I think that's, that's what's happening.
Yeah, I guess I was referring to the onsite, the, the seventeen acres on the north end of the property, or maybe I just misunderstood that, that was all, that was always going to be on, on us to build that buffer?
We're getting seventeen acres of land without any cost, so I think that's, that's probably a fair trade for us. And then the, the million is just kind of the commitment. We talked about how we would spend the proceeds from the sale of parkland, and that's where, with the interest of the residents and having a trail in that area, we committed to meeting the, that related to the four million, the five million, that's why we committed to that.
Okay. I, I don't have anything else. I just, I, I actually, one, one last thing. I believe we sold this property for like twenty million. Can someone remind me again, what did, so we're talking about the reinvestment in parks of a five million. What happened to, now what happened to, how did we allocate the other balance of that fifteen million dollars? Where, where are those funds? Or is that back into the park as well? Or what would you do with that money?
I think we still have to get a closing on this property, which is still months out. So I think when that happens, we'll be glad to have that conversation with council. I don't think we've made all those final decisions yet.
Uh, okay. So that's just a few, okay.
Yeah, because this doesn't finalize the deal. It's just supposed to zoning in place. They still, the developer still has November, November before the decision is made on the closing.
I got it. Okay. That's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jeremy. Council, other questions or comments on this item? Okay, well, I'll, I'll just join in by, by saying, again, I, I support this. I appreciate the, really the tremendous growth that's occurring in, in the Falcon Field Airport area right now. We've got Boeing breaking ground on additional buildings on, on their campus. We've, anyone who's driven by the airport recently have seen a tremendous amount of construction going on there. The economy in the Falcon Field area is doing really well, and it's a great place. We see good examples of how residential can occur and not impede the economic development of that area. So I'm, again, I, I feel like we've accomplished what we wanted to on this piece of property. It's a, it's a win-win situation. The Red Mountain Ranch residents were not thrilled with having commercial development on, on that piece, and, and so we've been able to avoid that. In fact, it's going to be upscale homes that I think are going to increase the property values of, of the entire neighborhood. We were able to preserve the Mountain Trail Park and have that developed with the proceeds. We're also, the Red Mountain Ranch HOA Park will, will be upgraded from its current conditions. And then the whole area, the whole region will, will get more regional park amenities, including the pickleball courts at Gene Autry and the improvements to the Red Mountain Regional Park. So I just want to express my thanks to Mr. Luna, to Mr. Blanford, to the Red Mountain HOA, to our city staff that worked so hard, even with all of the, the stakeholders to get us to this point. So thank you for your job well done. I now declare the public hearing on this item closed. Council, is there a motion to approve items nine A through nine B? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. We will do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitaker.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Arethia.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye as well. The motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item ten, items from citizens present. Ms. Mickelson, do we have requests to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have two requests to speak, and they both requested that. I read their comments, so I will jump right in.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
The first comment card is from Rick Castillo, and he says, request for the institution of a citizens oversight council coalition to audit and help hold accountable the Mesa Police Department. Pickoff funding coming in part for federal assistance grants already earmarked by, earmarked by the City of Mesa for police and fire COVID-19 here's act dispersment and maintained with a combination of special tax district levy funds and/or the general fund as otherwise permissible by law or city charter. The second comment card is from Chuck Harvey. It states, I want to express my support for police reinforcement for the City of Mesa, specifically reevaluate the role of police in our society. Serious crimes and calls involving possible arrest and apprehension should be treated separately than mental health, wellness checks, simple civic issues, et cetera. Create non-lethal departments of the force who are not equipped with lethal weapons. Improve de-escalation tactic emphasis and additional training on bias and racist treatment. That's all of the requests.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mickelson. Council, that concludes the items on our agenda for this meeting. Why don't, but could I invite you to please unmute your microphones and we'll do a voice, a voice vote to adjourn this meeting? Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.